Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Since we're masked, I thought I might do both. Some of us, thank you. We're now in order. I didn't bring mine in.
If Mr. Gentry will be complete as he always does.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Gentry. At this point in time, I would like to ask us to take a moment of silence to remember all of the people who are suffering in our country, in our neighborhood with this COVID-19 and other issues. I hear and see lots of things going, if we just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Gentlemen, it's come the time now to approve the agenda. I have a couple of myself I'd like to add. If we could look at item number 10F to add the public records policy, please. Jamie, will you turn that down just a little bit? I can't hear my voice reverberating the entire night. That will drop me out of order. Thank you. The second one is I would like to add a time when we can add on to our agenda for this evening to discuss the litigation Madison Asafault versus Madison County, file number 19CVS340, North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A3 on there. Have a discussion about that on our agenda, and I'd like to add that if I could.
Mr. Chair, you want to move item 11 to make it item 12 and then make your item number 11?
I think that'd be awesome. Thank you, sir, for throwing me a rope. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wettles. That's what we're going to do. So those are my two suggestions. Do I have others?
There ain't no other suggestions, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye and raise your right hand. Since we're masked, I thought I might do both. Some of us, thank you. We're now in order. I didn't bring mine in.
If Mr. Gentry will be complete as he always does.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Gentry. At this point in time, I would like to ask us to take a moment of silence to remember all of the people who are suffering in our country, in our neighborhood with this COVID-19 and other issues. I hear and see lots of things going, if we just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Gentlemen, it's come the time now to approve the agenda. I have a couple of myself I'd like to add. If we could look at item number 10F to add the public records policy, please. Jamie, will you turn that down just a little bit? I can't hear my voice reverberating the entire night. That will drop me out of order. Thank you. The second one is I would like to add a time when we can add on to our agenda for this evening to discuss the litigation Madison Asafault versus Madison County, file number 19CVS340, North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A3 on there. Have a discussion about that on our agenda, and I'd like to add that if I could.
Mr. Chair, you want to move item 11 to make it item 12 and then make your item number 11?
I think that'd be awesome. Thank you, sir, for throwing me a rope. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wettles. That's what we're going to do. So those are my two suggestions. Do I have others?
There ain't no other suggestions, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We now have an approved agenda for those two items added on there. Okay. Our next point of on our agenda is number two, approval of the April 14, 2020, regular minutes. I know you've had a chance to read them and go through. I'll wait on a motion to approve, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be fine. I move that those minutes be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Commissioner Wettles. Thank you, Mr. Brigman. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Our third point is public comment, and I have been notified by our clerk that we do not have public comment this evening. So item three, we go through, which takes us to item four. I'll give you a chance to turn to that in your notebooks. Item four is Commissioner Gentry discussing the CARES Act and a resolution. Mr. Gentry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're all aware that we are going through a very challenging financial time, and we are in the early stages of federal and state relief that is being rolled out. I would encourage anyone that missed today's testimony before the Senate relative to the difficulty that the federal government is seeming to have in the implementation of getting funds delivered, even though those funds have been already appropriated by Congress. North Carolina was appropriated and will receive, in due course, funds through the CARES Act. And there's a lot of details on that. I'm not going to take a huge amount of time this evening, and Mark has some additional details internally when we get all further down about decisions for how some of that $603,000 first round dollars. The only thing I would like to add for that is while the General Assembly is currently in session and huge budget decisions are being made, on behalf of the North Carolina Association, the county commissioners, and the board, on which I said, I encourage people to remind their legislators and other elected officials of the duty to provide support to local government. It is absolutely critical that we are going to be able to maintain essential services, that we receive some additional assistance because we know there will be reductions in sales tax revenues and other direct and indirect expenses as we continue this marathon. So both at the state level and now at the federal level, as we continue to figure out some way in the next round that will be coming through Washington. I have to give a couple of shout-outs this evening to my fellow commissioner, Mr. Matt Lekel, who's been a big help with me. Matt, I really appreciate that and all of your help on this. And to Terry Bellamy, who has been invaluable and also helping us on that. And internally, for two working committee groups made up of citizens in the county, one which will be on the economic and business side and the other one on the friendship fund side for helping individuals. All of that's rolling out, and it's a lot of detail. So just stay tuned, and people will bring you up to date. The second part is I would like to read into the record a resolution of appreciation and recognition. Whereas the citizens of Madison County have shown great understanding and support while caring for themselves as well as their neighbors during these uncertain times surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the Madison County school system has provided outstanding leadership and direction in continuing the high quality of education and providing thousands of meals to the children of Madison County. And whereas healthcare professionals, public health and safety officers, emergency medical services, and the Hot Springs Health Program have each provided dedicated service during this time. And whereas the emergency management team
Make a motion. Go vote in session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Since we're masked, I thought might do both. Some of us, thank you. We're now in order. I didn't bring mine in. If you want.
Flag proclam.
You're fine. Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Gentry. At this point in time, I would like to ask us to take a moment of silence to remember all of the people who are suffering in our country, in our neighborhood, with this COVID-19 and other issues. Well, I hear and see lots of things going. We just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Gentlemen, it's come the time now to approve the agenda. I have a couple of myself I'd like to add. If we could look at item number 10F to add the public records policy, please. Jamie, will you turn that down just a little bit? I can't hear my voice reverberating the entire night. That will drop me out of order. Thank you. The second one is I would like to add a time when we can add on to our agenda for this evening to discuss the litigation Madison Asafault versus Madison County, file number 19CVS340, North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A3 on there. Have a discussion about that on our agenda. And I'd like to add that if I could.
Mr. Chair, you want to move item 11 to make it item 12 and then make your item number 11?
I think that'd be awesome. Thank you, sir, for throwing me a rope. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wechtlus. That's what we're going to do. So those are my two suggestions. Do I have others?
Nope. There ain't no other suggestions, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, raise a right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We now have an approved agenda for those two items added on there. Okay. Our next point of on our agenda is number two, approval of the April 14, 2020 regular minutes. I know you've had a chance to read them and go through. I'll wait on a motion to approve, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be fine. I move that those minutes be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Commissioner Wechtlus. Thank you, Mr. Brigman. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Our third point is public comment. And I have been notified by our clerk that we do not have public comment this evening. So item three, we go through, which takes us to item four. I'll give you a chance to turn to that in your notebooks. Item four is Commissioner Gentry discussing the CARES Act and a resolution. Mr. Gentry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're all aware that we are going through a very challenging financial time and we are in the early stages of federal and state relief that is being rolled out. I would encourage anyone that missed today's testimony before the Senate relative to the difficulty that the federal government is seeming to have in the implementation of getting funds delivered, even though those funds have been already appropriated by Congress. North Carolina was appropriated and will receive in due course funds through the CARES Act. And there's a lot of details on that. I'm not going to take a huge amount of time this evening. And Mark has some additional details internally when we get all further down about decisions for how some of that $603,000 first round dollars. The only thing I would like to add to that is while the General Assembly is currently in session and huge budget decisions are being made, on behalf of the North Carolina Association, the county commissioners, and the board, on which I said, I encourage people to remind their legislators and other elected officials of the duty to provide support to local government. It is absolutely critical that we are going to be able to maintain essential services, that we receive some additional assistance because we know there will be reductions in sales tax revenues and other direct and indirect expenses as we continue this marathon. So both at the state level and now at the federal level, as we continue to figure out some way in the next round that will be coming through Washington. I have to give a couple of shout outs this evening to my fellow commissioner, Mr. Matt Leckel, who's been a big help with me. Matt, I really appreciate that and all of your help on this. And to Terry Bellamy, who has been invaluable and also helping us on that. And internally, for two working committee groups made up of citizens in the county, one which will be on the economic and business side and the other one on the friendship fund side for helping individuals. All of that's rolling out and it's a lot of detail. So just keep, stay tuned and people will bring you up to date. The second part is I would like to read into the record a resolution of appreciation and recognition. Whereas the citizens of Madison County have shown great understanding and support while caring for themselves as well as their neighbors during these uncertain times surrounded the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the Madison County school system has provided outstanding leadership and direction in continuing the high quality of education and providing thousands of meals to the children of Madison County. And whereas healthcare professionals, public health and safety officers, emergency medical services, and the Hot Springs Health Program have each provided dedicated service during this time. And whereas the emergency management team, first responders, fire departments have worked tirelessly to stay ahead of the curve while caring for and supporting the needs of our residents. And whereas numerous food banks across the county have provided food as well as other resources to assist county residents during the time that it has been most needed. And whereas industries in the area, as well as businesses and their employees, have provided much-needed supplies and products for our county. And whereas the Madison One Team, as well as the Economic Development Task Force and the Madison Friendship Group, provide funding sources and assistance for those in need. And therefore, it being resolved that the Madison County Board of Commissioners would like to acknowledge the service of each person who has been involved in these efforts during this pandemic. The board recognizes that this will be a long journey and that we are all one, involved in this together. This, the 19th day of May, 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner Gentry. My fellow commissioners, we need a vote on this to up or down before we can put that into the record. You've heard Commissioner Gentry's proclamation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
A motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Discussion, all in favor, aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Our next item is Brooke Ledford, our Community Services Director. Give her a minute just to walk in here.
Evening, Brooke.
Evening, Brooke.
As she comes to the podium, we all would like to, I think, give her a nod and say congratulations on committing your masters of leaving Human Relations or Resources, whichever one it is. Okay. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So today I need to get approval for our certificates and assurances. The NCTOT requires transit systems to submit the certifications and assurances for funding. There are four forms for this. And the four forms are the certificates and assurances, which assures that we have the legal authority to apply for funds and receive funds. The second one is the certification and restriction of warranty, which says that no federal or state money received by the transportation authority will be used to pay for influences for contracts, grants, loans, agreements. And the third one is community transportation program grant application warranty, which is protection of transportation-related employees should their jobs of employment status be impacted. And the fourth one is certification of equivalent service, which states that services MCTA offers to people with disabilities is equal to the services offered to people without disabilities. So I'm requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve having the board chair sign all four forms. And the county attorney's signature will also be needed on the certificates and assurances as well.
Could that be done in one motion? Donnie?
Yes.
Ms. Ledford, I said this looks very similar to the one we've done. We do this on an annual basis, correct?
Yes.
This looks like the same certification we did last year.
The second.
Okay, just there. Okay. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve Ms. Ledford's? Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Gentry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wechtlus.
Just wanted to make sure our county attorney has reviewed that everything's in order.
It is.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that discussion. So we have a motion, second, and discussion. Any further discussion? If not, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Under item six, we now have our library director, Kim Bella Fato.
Bella Fato.
Bella Fato. Okay, thank you. I want to make sure I got that right. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Kim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My first occasion here with you all. And what I'm doing, can you hear me okay, given with the mask on?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. What I'm here to present are proposed bylaw changes from our Board of Trustees. There has not been a substantive change to the bylaws since about 2007.
Okay.
The most important things that they're trying to do is clarify the advisory nature of the board, that it is not a governing board. They've asked for a couple other tweaks to the wording. They would like to make it clear that in representation on the board, they would love to see a balance of our three communities between Hot Springs, Mars Hill, and Marshall, when that's possible. They'd also like to encourage trustee members to be patrons of the library. As you can imagine, that makes discussions a little easier if they have some stake in that. And the third primary change that they wanted to do was to adjust the number of the quorum from five to four just based on representation and attendance. That's probably the big change. And then because we had proposed changes, they, in the third article, they made some adjustments to the actual division of duties versus what was originally written in the bylaws, which indicated there are some things that are done by me, not by the chairperson, such as publishing the meetings and all of that, which we just do to ensure that the paperwork is filed correctly and promoted. So what we are asking of the board is approval of these bylaw changes.
And certainly, your board has already looked them over and are in agreement, correct?
This came from the board.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I.
I'm representing them, but this came from the board.
I assume as much as one. Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, we've heard our library director's recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a motion. Mr. Snellson?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to, I have, I have an issue with, with one of the changes. I would be more than willing to approve the remainder of them if we could table for further discussion. One, one issue. I don't know if we can break it up or not.
Where's that, Mr. Wechtlus?
The issue, I'm trying to locate it here in my notes. I'm sorry.
No, no trouble.
Computer's scrolling slow.
As he looks, but I also wanted to say I really commend you and your staff for offering to help with those other helping duties y'all are doing there at the library. That is, that's awesome.
If we can help, we are happy to do it.
You guys have done an awesome job, by the way, I've got to say, in keeping it open. We're one of the few library systems in the entire state that stayed open through all this. So our staff is to be commended about that and I appreciate that tremendously.
Matt, your question may have been the same as mine. Article two, second page.
Yeah.
Prior and version, and then the revised version. In the existing, if I am reading this correctly, and Donnie, if you have a copy also, "Members of the board shall be appointed by the county commissioners with qualified voters of the county, none of whom shall hold office or employment by the county government." And is that changed in the revision?
Yeah, and the revision is.
Yes.
Let's see.
Yes.
The revision says upon recommendation by the board, it must be an active member of the library system.
And ultimately, the appointment.
Is still with the county commission.
So, my question is, the shall, Donnie, from a legal standpoint? I know there's, you know, a lot of times in legal language, shall means you are required to take that action. Am I, am I reading too much into that?
Are you talking about the revision that says?
Yes, members of the board, members of the board shall be appointed by the county commission.
From residents of the camp.
Right. And which makes, makes total sense that we want them to be residents of the county. It makes total sense that we want them to be an active patron of the Madison County Public Library System. Those make perfectly, perfectly good sense. The fact that none of whom shall hold office or employment in county government makes total sense as well.
I think.
My concern is with the shall.
I think all of those are qualifications. That in, in order for you to appoint them, they have to meet those qualifications.
But I guess my question, let me restate it just to be perfectly clear here because Commissioner Gentry and I believe, and I don't mean to speak for him, but I believe we have the same concern, is that the shall, if, if the board, the library board comes to us and says, this is who we want to have on our board, but there is, I just want to make sure that the shall does not obligate us to be forced to take that list.
It does not because there is.
The original wording used the shall also. We actually did not change the verb in the original wording.
Yeah, there's.
I understand. I just want to be sure. If we're revising stuff, I want to make sure it's right.
I got you.
I'm not trying to say anybody's got ulterior motives here.
No, no, no.
I just want to make sure we're not handcuffing people in the future.
You, it just me, all this means is that whoever is appointed has to have those qualifications. It does not bind you to have to appoint who they bring to.
Awesome.
If that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I think what I'm trying to say is that a lot of times in legal terminology, shall is mandatory, may is optional. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not.
I think that verb applies to the four qualifications and not to what they're bringing to.
Okay. As long as, as long as our county attorney is okay and clear about that, I, I'm fine then. I rescind. Well, I guess I didn't make a motion, so there's nothing for me to rescind.
Okay, so we have a mo.
This is just discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Wechtlus. We have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? All in favor by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, Kim.
Also enjoyed talking with your daughter out front. I'm doing that. She is a very intelligent young lady studying chemistry by all means. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Our next item is item seven, Terry Bellamy, our Economic Development Director. Item seven. Good evening.
Good evening.
Terry made to put you in the dark there.
Good evening. Shall we go forward to the mission? Tonight, I'm here to present two items that are new in for Madison County for your approval and consideration. The first item for your consideration is the Hot Springs Wi-Fi Project. As you may recall, Madison County was recognized by Governor Cooper as a hometown strong community, as part of his rural agenda. Due to that effort, Madison County received $50,000 from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to help reduce the digital divide. To implement the grant objectives, the staff has done a few things. We provided wireless hotspots to the Madison County school system to help students complete their homework assignments during COVID-19. Provided five computers and three laptops for the Hot Springs Library for the community to use. Upgraded the Hot Springs access point to increase the service quality at their library. Assisted with our contracts being drafted by an attorney. Tonight, in order to continue the implementation of the grant, Madison County Department of, that was provided by the, by the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, what staff has done is work with the IT department, work with the IT department, as well as the North Carolina State's Department of Information. And we issued a RFP in order for the Hot Springs Wi-Fi Project. In response to the RFP, we received a proposal from Open Broadband. And that proposal is in your packet. The proposal will provide free internet service from the elementary school in Hot Springs all the way to Hot Springs Resort and Spa, even including the campground. The monthly service for the internet that, internet that will be provided, will be provided, will be paid for the Madison County Tourism Development Authority. Tonight, watching via Zoom is Alan Fitzpatrick from Open Broadband. He is available to answer any questions that you may have. So tonight, I'm asking that you do a couple of things. One, approve the contract for Open Broadband to install Wi-Fi in downtown Hot Springs and allocate $21,165.62 from the grant in order to support the project.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
I just like to make an observation.
Sir?
Terry, to just make sure everybody caught that, the Tourism Development Authority will be paid. This will be free Wi-Fi.
Yes, sir. And if you want to give us some more details about what's already in the packet, I can give that if you like. But the monthly contract will be paid by the Tourism Development Authority of Madison County to ensure that the visitors and the residents are able to service are able to do so with no cost.
That's awesome.
It's returning the investment of the taxes collected there. For a very, very good project. Thank you.
It may be just a minor thing to mention, but they also do realize that the photograph of those public library that they have in their proposal is not the current Hot Springs Library anymore.
Yes, sir. And we've already talked to Mr. Fitzpatrick. And it's him, if you look at the contract that you have, the correct address is included.
Okay.
And he is aware that the photograph is not correct.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure he knew we were in the right place.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of it or be disrespectful. I just wanted to make sure that he knew that that tower was not behind the public library anymore.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
We've heard an outstanding presentation. It's in your, your books. I'm sure you had a chance to look at it online. We need to approve the contract first. Anyone have a, have a motion to approve the contract?
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Aye and a right hand? Awesome. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. The second thing is to the allocation from the Economic Development Board of $21,165.62 to fund this, from that grant. That also needs to be voted on.
Mark?
Have a motion from Mr. Snellson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wechtlus. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. That is a wonderful thing to happen to a part of the county that sometimes is underserved. So that's, that is awesome. Thank you.
Thank those folks for being willing to provide service. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. So the next item that I have for you tonight for your consideration is the approval and creation of a Madison County Small Business Fund, which will be implemented and run by Mountain Bizworks. This is being recommended by the Economic Development Task Force. The Chair of the Task Force, Mitch Hampton, is available for questioning and he's available via Zoom. As you are keenly aware, COVID-19 has had a significant impact on small businesses in Madison. While the federal government has provided funding via the Small Business Administration to help small businesses and the state has provided funding via the North Carolina Rural Center's Rapid Response Loan Program, as well as Golden Week Foundation, many small businesses from Madison County have not benefited from those programs. Tonight, I'm requesting that you consider the creation of a Madison County Small Business Fund. We're asking as a board or a task force that you approve the scope of work from Mountain Bizwork and make plans to allocate $75,000 to begin the program. A couple of things I want to make sure you're aware of. This particular issue is one of significance not only for existing small businesses, it's for people who are going to visit a COVID-19 coming month. So how does this program work? This is a long program that provides up to $10,000 based on the businesses pre-COVID-19 movement. The initial six months will have no payments or income and these things that will present one at a time. After six. After six months, if they have not given three finance that loan with the SBA, the SBA loan, or otherwise you pay the loan, then we convert it into a loan that they will pay back in thirty-six months. Because they won't have interest.
Terry?
Yes.
Can you hang on one sec? I'm, I'm hearing that it's very difficult to hear Terry when she turns to the screen. Can we get a microphone or anything for Terry? Thank you, Jamie. Thank you.
Keeping in mind, there are no prepayment penalties in our loan, but those who do not pay their loan back, it is eligible for collections. Eligible uses for the loans, payrolls, accounts payable, fixed debts, and other bills the business has and are unable to pay due to COVID-19's impact. Who is eligible? They have to have a physical location in Madison County. They have to have at least one employee and up to twenty-five employees. Unlike other communities that have an expansion of up to fifty employees, Madison County's task force is recommending twenty-five. That way, those who really need this fund have an opportunity to access it. One of the things that the committee and Commissioner Wechel was ma- made sure we included was Madison County property taxes must be current. So you will be loaned funds to individuals who are current on that taxes. Also, an important issue that your former county manager wanted to make sure was included as well as Tammy Whitlock from First Citizens.
First Bank.
First Bank, I was going to go there.
You're all right.
Is to make sure that they're in good standing with North Carolina Secretary of State's Office and it's based upon a search that Mountain Bizworks staff will complete. Those two issues are Madison County-specific. Unlike other funds that have been created, I want you to know that the task force members want to make sure that we are being good stewards over this fund. And so they made sure those qualifications are included unlike any others that have been created. The business must have been, have been operating for at least one year and demonstrated loss of revenue at least of 25% or more due to COVID-19. Agreed to provide impact data because we want to know how many jobs are being saved and how we're helping them be successful.
Sure.
And the other items are in your packet, and so I won't go into that. But here are much more detail than people like them. And to do that for the public, I do have the information here. But I want to make sure those are in the one, one of those. I'm happy to say we do have partners in the community who are supporting this initiative. And so I do want you all to know that the Rotary Club of Madison County has, has allotted $2,500 to support this initiative. The Madison County Chamber of Commerce is supporting this initiative for $10,000. We have other asking. As soon as they've been approved, we'll let you know that as well.
That's a great start.
Yeah.
It is a great start.
A great start.
Thank you again, Terry, and thank you to members of that working group.
I think our, our first question, it's a great presentation. Thank you, Terry. As always, I think my first question would be to Mr. Pulliam, is where, where would we get this $75,000 from, sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and the public, the plan at this point in juncture would be to pull this from the CARES Act, some of the five hundred, some thousand dollars that the Guild Assembly has appropriated. This is a qualifying expense. Of course, we'll have to submit our plan to the Office of State Budget Management, get their approval, and then we can begin the process of allocating these funds and moving it over and putting it into this Madison County Small Business Fund through Mountain Bizworks.
And I think what's key too, that we want to make sure everybody understands, and Terry, please correct me if I'm wrong in anything that I say. The funds that Madison County is putting up is essentially just to guarantee the loans. That money, the plan, the way the thing is structured is that money will eventually come back to Madison County as the loans are repaid. So this is, this is basically just money that we're putting up to back this, to back this program. And very grateful for the chamber getting involved and Rotary. That, that's a big chunk of money for a small local Rotary.
You know it.
To kick in, even though in the grand scheme of things, $2,500 is, is, is small potatoes. We are very grateful. That's a big, big, a, a big commitment from our local Rotary, and I want to make sure that Rotary and the chamber is properly recognized, which Terry did a great job. I just wanted to reiterate it. They're, they're, they're good business partners is what I'm trying to say.
Well, and this, this is going to impact a lot of our citizens and our small businesses here. This, 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 this is, this is a good step in the right direction for economic development, also people just need to get their businesses back open and surviving. So.
Well, hopefully, it will be the beginning of a very long-term investment in the community. And Matt said this is a revolving fund. In effect, really, it's passing forwards some of that federal money so that this is being a real seed project. It's like its partnership on the other side. And hopefully will be something the community will continue for a long time to come. And both of these funds will allow people within the community to invest in our community, both businesses and organizations, and do so in an organized manner. So this is really taking an opportunity from this bad situation and making it an opportunity that, that could benefit the county for a long time to come.
And Terry, it's safe to appeal to anyone that may be out there in cyberland listening to us and would like to say they're financially, financially stable folks that, that have a desire to try and help out the county, they could also get on board with helping us back these loans as, as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
All right.
What is, Mountain Bizworks, are, are they charging us a fee for this?
No. I'm happy to say that because of the relationship that we have with the organization, they are not charging us the initial $2,500 that other communities have paid. That has been waived from Madison County's fund. They are looking forward to being able to assist us. They was, they were disappointed that, that most of their business, our business from Madison County, they actually applied, were not able to receive funds. And so this is their way of helping the local businesses of Madison County, and they're happy to be a part of this process.
Also, I see on here, we are, you are asking for us to approve $75,000. And it says an up to a maximum of $125,000.
And that's for the entire fund. So that's only, Madison County is only being asked for $75,000. But to create the fund or for them to know how much to expect, it could be up to 25, $125,000. So if we have other community partners who would like to contribute, it would be more than $75,000. So that's why that number is not just $75,000. And so just for clarity, that wants to include the Rotary, Rotary's money as well as the Chamber of Commerce money when we begin the fund.
I'd like to make a point of clarification. I don't think you're asking for the appropriation tonight. Just the concept of this fund and the establishment of the fund. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. Because of the general simple guidelines for economic development allocations, you have to have a public hearing in order for that type of allocation to be made. And so this is the, to allow you to start the process to say, we want to have a public hearing and draw a date to be certain, determined. But I need to go ahead and get you all started about the fund and at least get it excited, and so we can ask our other community partners to support this initiative.
That's a good question.
Yeah, Terry, Terry is exactly right. You'll have to have the public hearing. You'll need to adopt a resolution in order to fund EDC with the appropriation. And then additionally, since CDC is part of the county, the county will need to enter into a contract with Mountain Bizworks for them to basically be the lender, that they will only make loans consistent with the terms of the contract. So they will create a note, they'll create all the documentation. And Mountain Bizworks is more than just a nonprofit. It is actually a federally certified sort of small business lender. And this is the exact same concept that Bunkham has created for their fund that is, it's already up and running, isn't it, Terry?
It is.
So, so it's a proven, it's a proven vehicle.
And Mr. Lawson, tonight we're just approving the, the concept and the construct.
You're just telling them to get, get working, let's do it.
We're rolling it out.
The public hearing is just on ten days' notice.
Understood. Okay.
Then we'll get the resolution, and I'm assuming Terry will work on a contract with Mountain Bizworks.
Terry, my, my, my final question, I want to say thank you. If a, if a business has trouble filling out this loan paperwork or this Mountain Bizwork, help them with that process, because sometimes that stuff's very detail-oriented.
Yes, sir. That's why they are the chosen partner.
Okay, awesome.
Because they have experience helping, helping small businesses through the process.
I thought I knew that, but I wanted to hear it. I just think that's good news for people, as Matt said, in cyberland, to know that we're not just throwing you out there saying to apply. We're going to help you. With questions. Okay, good. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if there be no further discussion, I move that we take this first step tonight as requested.
Second. Discussion.
I just want to thank Terry for her detailed and hard work on this. She has pulled our committee together for numerous meetings on short notice many times. All the participants, and I'm going to leave someone out if I try to name them, but all the participants in that committee have been to, I think, almost a hundred percent, a hundred percent attendance on every meeting if I remember correctly. So I thank those business partners and thank Terry for pulling it all together. And I just wanted to publicly recognize those folks and thank them for, for what they've done.
Awesome. Other discussion? Motion and a second. All in favor, right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Terry.
Great job, Terry. Thank you.
Awesome. Gentlemen, our next item is Kathy Ray, our Board of Elections Director. Item eight in your, in your book. Good evening, Dr. Ray.
Right there next to you, Jamie.
Yeah, right there, Jamie.
Hope all of you are doing well. And once again, I'm here to present our bidding equipment. And this is the lease agreements, the first item, for the automark, dot mark machines that we've used during the primary and that we plan to use during the second primary due to 23rd. The company, Elections Systems and Software, has sent the two rental agreements for the two primaries. And you can see the figures for those. The first one for the primary released fourteen of the machines at $8,470. And the second rental agreement is to lease four of the machines for the second primary at the price of $1,400. Any other questions about those?
Pretty clear.
Just to clarify, the first one has already been, obviously, has been incurred.
Yes, sir.
Which was previously approved, right?
It was approved, but the rental agreement was never executed.
Okay, we didn't procure the agreement. Okay.
But this is just the agreement.
Okay.
Get everything cleaned up.
Okay.
So actually, we're only approving for $200,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. First one got approved, but we need to get the contract.
This is a requirement to conduct your second primary.
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, you've looked over the leases, I assume?
Both of the leases are, are ready for execution. You just need to simply add the county's addendum to the contracts that we provide to them, to both of them. And they, they need my approval. That's the form with that addendum.
Awesome. Hearing that, gentlemen, I know everybody looked this over. We've, we've had Dr. Ray before in front of us. I think we understand this, this process. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So just make sure we're only doing the second one, as Commissioner Wechel said, this is only our second one we're looking at. The first one's already been paid. I mean, we're going to come out, money's been approved. We're, that's done.
Yep.
It was just the second one. Okay. All in favor? Aye and a right hand. Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
The second item is the, it's a financing option to purchase the fourteen express vote ballot markers. We discussed this several times, and in a discussion with the county manager, we talked about perhaps a financing option, which the company has just most gracious, graciously worked up for us. They've also let me know that if we go with the financing option, if we choose to purchase, that they will allow $6,300 worth of the lease that we're just, that was just approved, be applied toward the purchase of the new machines. Once we get everything cleaned up with these two lease agreements, then they will send me another quote on, Mr. Pulliam.
I missed that.
That will have the, the credit applied toward the financing of machines. Now, we'll either have to purchase these fourteen machines to use in the November election, or we will have to lease once again the fourteen automatics. So that's the, the two options we have, is to go with purchasing these machines and their hours for future elections, or to execute another lease for November.
And it refresh, and then that, that lease to do the fourteen machines was how much again?
Eighty-four seventy.
Okay. I was thinking it was eighty-five hundred, somewhere in that range.
And it will be comparable.
All right.
For the November election.
And I guess here's my concern. If this, how, how do we see the social distancing aspect affecting our elections? I mean, are we gon', are we gonna have, I, I know we're going to have it okay for this primary. Is there any idea of what we're going to do in November?
No.
At this point, there's been no discussion about that.
It's just way too soon.
I understand. So I guess my question is, is it possible that we're buying machines we're not going to be able to use in November? Because of social distancing guidelines.
That's just something I can't answer.
Well, and also.
You can't read the future.
I didn't know there had been any discussion about it. I, I assume that.
Well, you all heard the discussions about perhaps going to mail in.
Mail in.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, you know the pushback you're going to get from the legislature.
Amen. Rightfully so.
Mail in about. I mean, I think you're always going to have in-person voting around. I don't think that's ever going away.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I really don't foresee it going away. I see a real uptick in absentee mail-in requests. I think we're going to have that. But I still think there's going to be those people that are going to want to in-person vote, and we're going to have to provide that. And as long as we have to provide that, we've got to have the equipment to do it. And the federal government tells us we will have an ADA ballot marker at every polling site. No questions asked. It's got to be done. So, you know, I, that's the position, right?
Okay.
I still like the idea of leasing them rather than buying them outright, though, just to save some of our cash and to look at this process. And then if something happens, maybe we could trade them in on a, on a newer model if we have to, if we have to do that. Because our, all our, all our, our sales tax is going to be down too, so I think leasing is the way to go. And Mr. Wechel, I think, I think you're exactly right. We don't know how it's going to go, but we have to do something.
If we lease another, for another election, have there been any discussions with the equipment providers as to future pricing?
I have had discussions with them about the shipping costs.
Okay.
If you all choose to go with the lease, then, you know, can we just keep these machines on-site because they are on-site now? Rather than having to pay $2,100 to ship them back to the company, then bring them back. And they said, if your choice is to lease, that they will leave them here on-site with us, and, and we would avoid then having to pay that shipping cost. So.
Which makes sense.
That makes sense to both sides.
And ultimately, we're responsible for their safekeeping at that point, which we would be anyway.
Right. And it, and it doesn't matter to me. Let me make that very clear. I love these machines. They're here. I know them.
All right.
You know, if, if we get new ones, I'll learn. If we get new ones, I'll learn them, however.
Sure.
You know, either way you want to go.
Sure.
We just need to know something by May 31st. We need to know, because if we're going with new machines, I got to have time to get to know them and my staff has to have time to get to know them, so.
Kathy, one other question. We were going to give a $6,300 credit if we purchased them. Did you discuss any sort of credit back against that long-term lease?
No, no.
Okay.
There hasn't been any discussion.
That was my question, was there any consideration? Okay, so that's.
Because that could turn an eighty-five hundred dollar lease into a $14,000 lease.
Yeah.
Or more.
Oh.
For, you know.
Yeah.
$14,000, $15,000 lease, if you lose the credit.
You got it.
And so that's a valid point.
So you owe them, you owe them for the primary. You're going to owe them for the second primary.
Yep.
And you're going to owe them for November.
Right. And if we follow through with the purchase of the machines, of the money that we're paying for the first primary and the second primary, we would receive a $6,500-ish credit.
Credit.
That's correct.
Kathy, down here in the footnotes, it states that the rates are valid for 60 days and therefore may change. Were these rates quoted in February?
They were, but they'll be good. I mean, I have their word that these are, you know, this is firm.
So we do know that, that they're not going to change because it said.
They won't change.
May change, you know, we don't want to vote on something and then they change them.
Yes, sir.
May is optional, we learned in the previous discussion.
Yeah. Really.
Well, my inclination, which is personal inclination, is to obviously do whatever we need to do, but at the least cost, but, you know, with also best options, okay? And we don't have a crystal ball about mail-in or this election or even elections to come. So what would be the most affordable option for November? I think that would be what mine. I would tend to go for what's the most affordable option. Because this contract going out, even though it's a five-year contract, three-year contract, Mr. Attorney, I'm quite sure, you know, we're not getting off into our discussion on contracts. But with all the uncertainty that we have, that we cannot answer, whatever is the least afford, you know, whatever cost to do the job. But for this election, whatever is the least investment to meet the requirement. And I see you nodding, so I'm obviously thinking.
And our county manager has an opinion on this, I've talked to him twice on it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commission, I do have an opinion on this. And my thoughts on it are, given the, I guess, the uncertainty around the mail-in ballots and the like, you know, $50,000 is a good bit of money to make a commitment to, whether you're, you know, financing that or not. Do we need the machines? Yes, we do. But do we need machines that will potentially become obsolete if Congress or somewhere makes changes? And I don't know the answer to this, and like you said, I don't have the crystal ball. But I think that more, maybe another approach to this, I would suggest, is rent the machines. This time, we rent them up in the vault and, you know, we can keep them here. And so that saves some expenses. I appreciate the fact that, you know, that our department head here has, Ms. Ray has negotiated the fact that they'll let us keep them here. And I think that's the best solution, in my personal opinion.
And that is the least expensive option for this election.
It is.
And Dr. Ray, I don't know if you've had any discussions at all with the provider. If we were to lease them again, obviously, if they still would honor the lease purchase agreement, we're still buying our used machines at that point. Has, did we already ask, had there been any discussion if we did carry it on for another lease term, that they would still honor the credit they've offered?
Under the lease, there's not been any discussion about credit under the lease, because that's technically.
No, I mean, if we choose to purchase the machines after November.
After November, I had not had any discussion.
Sorry, I should have clarified my question there.
The company's been awfully good about trying to work with us.
Absolutely.
I would suspect we would have, you know, their blessing as much as they can.
Well, it's a nervous for us to use the machine. And you are perfectly happy if we lease and think we will have a good election if we lease them.
And you won't need another machine until November of '21.
Yeah.
And our county attorney said he is good with how it looks, as long as we add our county's addendum to them.
On the lease agreement, yeah, the lease agreements are good.
Okay. Okay, I think we've had a good discussion, thank you, Dr. Ray. Do I have a motion to approve?
I would move that for one more election, we rent the machines for one more election.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Ray.
May I add one other thing?
Sure.
That you might get prepared for.
All right.
The State Board of Elections is providing us with ample PPE for the June 23rd election. I mean, we're so thankful, we're getting face shields, we're getting the sneeze barriers, we're getting masks, gloves, you know, just a platform of the stuff that they're sending so that our coworkers and our voters feel safe during their in-person voting. There'll be enough masks for every voter to have one who doesn't come with one already. The big ticket item for us is going to be the cleaning costs. So, and I'm right now working with some vendors who provide professional cleaning services to the extent that we need for COVID. They'll be using chemicals that kill COVID and obviously, you know, have checklists of when they're sanitizing restrooms, wiping after voters, the whole nine yards. This is not going to be cheap, folks, I can tell you. You have one blood spill, I understand that at the DMV building, and the neighborhood, $400 just to clean up that one blood spill. I'm looking at quotes of around $24,000 for the cleaning services. Now, this would be full-time, for all hours that voters are present during one-stop and election day and the hours that we're running to three sites, at all three sites, and also providing the deep cleaning services before election, you know, before we go into the one-stop sites and after the election, before we turn the buildings back over. So, you know, as soon as I get those quotes together, if I can get more than one, I'm running into some pushback from some of these companies in that they're limited staff now as well as, you know, liability issues involved. So, you know, just working through who would provide these services for us. So as soon as I get numbers, I'll give them to Kerry and to share with Mr. Poyum and let them all know what these costs are going to be. But I, you know, I almost lost my breath when I saw, you know, how expensive this is. But again, there is a lot of liability, there's a lot of, I mean, COVID is serious and we don't want our voters at risk and we certainly don't want our coworkers.
Well, and we want people to feel safe to come and vote, as well as the people running the election to feel safe. Otherwise, unbelievably suppress the voter turnout, really will.
That's true.
Whether it's primary or general election.
But just be prepared for that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Pleasure.
Thank you.
Chairman, there is one point, the board, I'd just like to ask the question. I guess at a previous meeting, the board has granted the purchase of these voting machines. Do we need to rescind that at this point, juncture, or not?
You, I think in February, you had approved it based upon county manager and county attorney's final certification of it. And that has not been done. It would, I think, be of a great relief to Mark and myself to have the board say that you now elect not to have us go through that process, if that's what you choose to do.
But if that is.
Just.
If that is the recommendation, let us discuss it, but I would certainly support our attorney and our manager wanting to clean it up.
I have no, no, I'll leave that up to Mark regarding the financial, and I think he's discussed that. Legally, the, if you elected to do it legally, we could attach the appropriate documents and you could purchase this if you wanted to do so. If you choose to do it for financial reasons, as you voted, of course, that's your prerogative to do that. But Mark is right, there was an approval to purchase the express vote machines back in February. So I guess due to financial considerations, you're now.
It's a whole other world.
Okay.
Well.
So yes, if you would entertain just, the action that you've taken tonight is a modification and a change and a rescission of that prior direction.
Okay, so we don't need any additional actions, anything?
I think it would be nice if you did take additional actions.
Well, if no one has an objection, I would be, let's discuss it, but I would have no difficulty in moving to rescind the decision of that February date in light of current economic conditions.
Can I do it?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We do appreciate the leadership of all of you through these times.
And we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I also have to say, thank you for staying with these elections.
Absolutely.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Ray.
Thank you.
I think everyone in this room can say with confidence that we run good elections, Madison County.
Amen.
Good, fair, honest elections. And it's never been more important than today that people have confidence that we would do everything we can to make sure it is safe for people to vote and encourage people to vote. And I thank you so much for your leadership and the Board of Elections' hard work in making sure that happens.
Absolutely. I just want to say, without my board, I couldn't do it. They're good people and they're awesome. You all are fortunate and me as well.
We're all in this together.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ray.
Gentlemen, our next item is item nine, we have Carrie Ledford, our finance officer. Come on down, Carrie. Good evening. Hi, Carrie.
Okay. Before you, you have budget amendment number 10. That was the addition that should have been at your table when you first arrived.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, you will see a large portion of the total amendment is to utilize funds from 4042 restricted portion of the fund balance for the request of Madison County Board of Education. They're requesting the remainder of the fiscal year 1920, 4042 set-aside funds. And this amount was not included in the original budget, so that's why it's on this amendment this time. And the Board of Education has requested the $286,738 for the completion of the alternate learning program building as well as other ongoing projects. Aside from the funds being requested by the Board of Education, a large portion of the amendment before you comes from the increase needed by the Board of Elections for the second primary. You also see that in the amendment, that we have received additional JCPenney funding for two of the programs. And the library, as well as emergency management, have both secured grants related to COVID-19 in amounts of $2,000 and $12,695 respectively. The annual shelter director also secured a new grant from the Wilkinson Foundation in the amount of $5,000. And none of these three grants mentioned require any matching funds from the county. And as always, I will inform you that our contingency account is now at $95,077.
In this budget amendment, the Sheriff's Department is asking for a total of $24,282?
They are, they have received that amount in extra unbudgeted revenue. So they had additional revenue that they were able to pull from that to be able to include that amount that they need for the maintenance.
And when you say maintenance, it says equipment maintenance for that.
That's correct.
And then it talks about the heat pump for the jail.
Yes.
The total of $24,000 is not for the heat pump, though?
No, I think it was like $17,000 for the heat pump installation, I think was one of the costs.
The quote that I see here was $15,000 for it?
That's correct.
Okay. So the difference in the money is for?
It's gone back into their building maintenance as well, into their maintenance as well.
For maintenance. Do we know maintenance for what type of maintenance, what?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I can surely find that out before I even give it to you tomorrow.
Because it, you know, it's, it states in here that, the letter that is from the sheriff states that the amount of $24,282, with this amendment, I'm also submitting new proposals obtained for the purchase of installation of a mini-spared heat pump, which we see that. So I'm just curious where the rest of the money is going.
I can give you that tomorrow, because I don't have that in front of me.
I can give you a little heads up on that, I was there the day that one went bad. It's one coolant, one of the, two of the servers as well going in there. So some of our systems were not going to work down there on our juveniles. And so we went to an out-of-county person to give us an emergency bid. But one of our in-county suppliers was able to beat the price. Mr. Willis.
Yes.
So we were able to save some money and spend it locally for that. But that's one of those prerequisites, if we don't do it pretty quickly, they could pull our juveniles. And I didn't want to lose that $111,000 a month.
Well, that's the $15,000 bid.
Yes, sir.
So.
I don't know the rest, but yes, that's.
So we don't know the rest at this point? Okay.
You need us to vote on this budget amendment? Okay. You'll get with Mr. Brigham tomorrow and let him know what that is, that's good, okay? Okay, we have that one. Do I have a motion based upon how it reads for budget amendment number 10?
I make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second discussion. All in favor? Aye and a raised hand, please.
Aye.
Thank you, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. The vote is, vote again for me, please, if you're in favor, hand up. Okay, so it's for one. Okay.
And next before you, you will see April's financial reports. We are at 83.3% through the year. The total of all the funds through the end of April show that we're at 82.28% for our revenue and at 77.15% for our expenses. Which is good for this day and age and this time of the year, so.
So you're giving us a feeling of, a feeling somewhat comfortable where we are and our expenditure is at the end of April?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And you feel okay with this, the effect of our sales tax?
We have not seen that yet. We are still receiving, we are still receiving the monies that were spent in February for the month of March. The department revenue gets in March, is what we just received four days ago, which is still on course. We've not seen any decline yet.
April.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to prepare for that to be considerably lower.
That's well said.
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody make sure we hear what he's saying.
Okay, next, I'm presenting for the tax office for your approval, the month of April's tax releases and refunds.
There is no discussion?
Just one second. Just one second.
Okay.
Have to locate it in my book. There's not many of them, so it's kind of hard to look.
Okay, I've got them now, too.
Much better than they used to be.
Okay.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, we need, we need a vote on that as well?
With no further discussion, I approve, we approve them as submitted.
Second.
A second?
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, right hand and aye?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, finally, before you, I'm requesting that you approve to enter into a contract with Mulvaney Jenkins for them to repair our annual audit. This contract is for the fiscal year of '20. The cost of services included is $49,500, and if you do so proven, this will be the third year that we've engaged with this company.
You said this is the third year?
Yes.
Gentlemen, I know you know more than I that this is, this is required by statute, and this is, we're on, we're on time this time for audit. It would be nice to make it on time.
And if I may ask our county manager and our finance officer, you are very comfortable with this accounting firm, which continues services?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do have, I've known this firm for 25 years. They do good work and have a tremendous amount of their practices in auditing governmental entities, and I've been seeing their work for years. They are a good firm, I totally agree.
And they come from Atlanta, Georgia, they don't know us from at all, except when they come here, they're here just to do a good audit and, and I think they know what we're looking for.
They are a clean provider.
To protect us. Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a second? Discussion.
Carrie, have you met with them and talked with them?
Oh, yes, I've been working with them now as we sleep.
Thirty years.
Try to finish up this year, last year's audit.
Okay.
So, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's a, that's a good discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Right hand and aye, please?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
At this point in time, gentlemen, it goes to item number 10 and Mark Pulliam, our county manager.
Mark, I think you need a bigger pull head.
I think so.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get you a bigger pull head next time.
So at this point, John, sure, I'm gonna turn our attention to the budget calendar. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I put in front of you an abbreviated budget calendar that basically will carry us through the balance of the current year as we begin to develop the fiscal year 2021 budget for your adoption. And so next Friday, we, the plan is, the county manager, with your approval, will present the budget document along with the proposed budget orders and the budget message, if you will, to the Board of County Commissioners. At that same time, the Board to the Board of the County Commissioners will schedule a public hearing on the budget. Public hearing will be held in June, only regularly scheduled back June the ninth. And the clerk will also be given a copy of the budget at the same time, and the clerk will make that available for all of the news media and interested citizens that they, if they want to come in and look at the budget, there'll be a copy available for people to look at. So this is the, so until the June 9th, we'd hold a public hearing. You have to wait 10 days after the first public hearing or the public hearing before you can adopt the budget, set the budget calendar under this scenario. If we, if you so choose, would be adopted on June 23rd, 2020.
Okay.
For fiscal year 2020.
What time are we meeting next Friday?
I would leave that up to you. I would suggest that we would meet at nine, nine o'clock and start at nine in the morning.
Yeah.
If that's okay with everybody.
Here?
We will, where would you like for us to have a meeting?
This, this is good. It's good available.
Here.
If it's good available.
I like, I like here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is nine o'clock okay, gentlemen?
Nine is good.
I'm seeing nods of his, Mr. Wechtel?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, cooperative extension.
We'll schedule that accordingly and get that moving forward.
Thank you.
While we have, there've been some discussion tonight about the CARES Act, so I'm gonna move to the CARES Act at this point in juncture. Everybody's probably wanting to know how much money has Madison County received from the federal government, or will receive, let me rephrase that, from the federal government from the federal CARES Act? And as it passed, the state legislature used the population to determine how to distribute the dollars, if you will, to Madison County and to the other counties that are eligible to receive it. So in this case, Madison County would receive a total of $603,000, but as you are all probably aware, the legislative intent was that a certain portion of this would pass through to the municipality within each county, and so I've put together a notional allotment, if you will, to the different towns in Madison County based on the latest population estimates from 2018. And so the numbers are that Madison County, $519,651, town of Hot Springs, $13,815, town of Marshall, $21,755, and the town of Mars Hill, $48,739.03. So I share this information with you, and I want to ask for two things from you. The first thing is, do you want me and the county to work with the towns, if you will, to develop an intergovernmental agreement so that they can utilize these dollars, and is this the dollar amount that you want? So I'm asking, do you want me to negotiate with the town administrators, if you will, their intergovernmental agreement for these dollar amounts? And if you're okay, that's what I will do at this point in juncture.
Yeah.
Well, we need some sort of checks and balances on the money, you know, with this, I want to know what the town did with it, who received it. We don't want some businesses to get it and some in need not, that even though we have this, you know, we just discussed the business work.
Commissioner Brigham, I think you're raising a very valid point, one that's been raised across the state by many, many people, you know, I mean, this money's coming to us from the feds, and it comes to us with lots strings of towels.
Correct.
We have to check every eye across every kid and make sure that we double check it, triple check it, quadruple check it. And so when you turn that money over to somebody else, and now they're writing the check, you really relinquish the control of being able to make sure that it satisfies the requirement. So that's why an intergovernmental agreement is gonna be critical, so that we clarify their respective roles, so that they're gonna be a subgranted, if you will, from us, but they still have to follow the federal rules, the same ones we do, so we'll have to have some assurances, or we would want to set up some sort of a clawback, and just like the states got with us, if they have a binding that results in something getting paid back, that we have to pay back, we want to get it back out of the town, and I don't think that's gonna be a problem here, but it is a concern.
Also, you know, you, you've listed the municipalities here are getting this money, and the county with the $519,000. Let's, I want to use this for instance, I'm, let's say I'm self-employed and I don't live in any of these towns, and I'm out in a rural area, and it affected my business drastically. Is that where the $519,000 will go to some people like that?
Well, you heard long ago from Terry Bellamy about the small business fund, we would be recommended at $75,000 out of this $519,000 be used for that fund. In addition, and I like this, we have another fund that I would like to talk about in just a moment, that deals with the personal side for another $75,000. And we also have some qualifying expenses that we incurred for overtime and for other related expenses for the education, for the COVID-19 hotline, and different things that we can replenish our coffers, put the money back, because those are qualifying expenses that were not budgeted in the current budget year, and so we will put, we will repay ourselves for those expenses that we already outlay. The good part about this is that there is no matching requirement.
Right.
If you're talking, it's zero match, but if you're talking about FEMA disaster funds, if you will, there is a three one, so it's 75 cents federal, 25 cents local. So we want to use these funds first, if you will, and then if we need more, that we'll try to go to the FEMA disaster relief, and we also know that there is talk of more legislation at the federal level. Now, that hasn't come about yet, but it's a good possibility at some point that we'll be more coming down the road. This money that we're talking about can't be used for revenue replacement.
Right.
It has to be used for direct benefits or directly related to COVID-19. So we have some, some, I guess, stipulations or restrictions on it, it's all be used for certain things, and we'll make sure that it is used in accordance with the federal guidelines. But I wanted to ask your permission to negotiate with the towns on an intergovernmental agreement, and also work on a plan to submit to the state, because we have to submit a plan to the state through the Office of State Budget Management for the full $603,961. And I'd like to get that done as soon as I could, so I need authorization to move forward with the towns on this.
Mr. Brigham brings up a good point, and if I remember that we talked about, Mr. Pulliam, that the county's actually responsible for making sure that the towns report back to them how they have spent this money. I mean, it's not, we're not just giving it to them, there will, there will be a, an accounting of these funds to make sure that it is correct, so that, that's, that's the good thing. Thank you.
My main concern is a lot of small businesses that are outside the towns that it has affected, you know, I hope we can reach out to them or they reach out to us, and we get them some assistance in some way.
We don't blame that's gonna be a major part of what Carrie was presenting, and then the other side, Friendship Fund, will be for helping individuals, for food banks, or all of these other things, what Marcus said, what's been, these two groups, each are asking for $75,000 out of this, which is completely within the intent of the federal legislation and what Raleigh, the General Assembly, and the governor and everybody, everybody agreed Raleigh for it, Chase. Think about it, when's the last time the General Assembly and the governor of this state voted basically unanimously for something? But it has very strict guidelines that are with it. As Mark said, number one, you can't use it just to plant for revenue. We, we can't just get it and spend it for whatever we want to spend it for. The intent was to help people.
Right.
And there's these two big community groups that are working very hard, and also the towns, it's specific of the legislation, the state, the towns are sharing, that they save you this power, right? And that's all for half the base. But you're absolutely right, there are small people in this community, there are independent business people or others that are really suffering, and this thing's not gonna go away next week or next month, I wish it would, we all do. But Mark, to give him authority to begin all the legal stuff that he and Donnie and everybody else is gonna have to, so we can get this money rolled out as quick as we get it, I think that's what you're asking for tonight, is that right, Mark?
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, we have this, this proposal from our county manager in front of us, it is, it looks like it's a fair and equitable distribution of it from there, we have an understanding from there. Somebody give me a motion to approve as, as written?
I will make that motion, too.
I'll see.
Okay, a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, right hand and aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I have a letter here that was developed from the Madison County Friendship, Madison Friendship Fund. When COVID-19 began to, we began to see the impacts, you know, businesses closing, having to be closed, and all, I mean, and people beginning to lose their job, what we saw from the county, myself especially, saw is that we would have businesses that had needs, and we would have people who have needs. And so when, in that light, you know, I'd asked Terry Bellamy to work on, as the Economic Development Director, to work on how we might have businesses. And so that's where the Madison Small Business Fund and Mountain Mizworks comes into play, but also submitted and talked with Tammy Coney about doing something on the individual side, and so she's been working with a group of people, and they are working to develop a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit organization, and it would be called Madison Friendship Fund. And I'm gonna read a letter that was provided from the Madison Friendship Fund Committee. Dear Madison County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Madison Friendship Fund, which is modeled after the One's Bunker Fund, the Madison Friendship Committee respectfully requests $75,000 to be allocated from the CARES Act funding, which Madison County anticipates to save. This allocation will support the fund's setup and mission of assisting individual Madison County residents who have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. The hardships will include loss of income due to COVID-19, help with utility bills, gasoline, childcare, rent payments, et cetera. When possible, grants will be paid directly on behalf, on their behalf, and in most cases, grants will be made directly to the vendor resident, to the individual resident. And this is something that they're working towards, okay? And so not asking for a motion tonight, I'm just sharing with you what the work is that's going on, so that you'll be aware, and the citizens can be aware, that we're trying to develop, develop a more comprehensive approach that addresses some needs, and, you know, so that's what that's about. You've already mentioned the Madison Friendship Fund, that if you're here to give, it's a great child of several people, including Dan Duncan, that are working on it, so. The last thing I'd like to say about the COVID-19 is that if you look at the numbers yesterday, I think we received where, that we have two, have had two cases in Madison County. That's the lowest of any counties in our area, you know, and so I would like to take my hat off to all the citizens of Madison County for following all the rules and doing the things they can to protect themselves, and so keep up the vigilance. I realize that, that we're starting to see more and more things begin to overlap, and I would just like to issue this caution, especially to those people who are at risk or in the, I guess, have those health conditions that put them at risk, that they continue to practice proper respiratory hygiene, washing your hands, if you don't drop the guard, that we continue to sanitize surfaces, and we do everything we can to protect the folks here in Madison County. That's all I have on that. The next item I have, I think, is related to the Madison Medics contract, and in that you have before you the contract for emergency medical services with Madison Medics. And in that, you have before you the contract for emergency medical services with Madison Medics. This is a result of an RFP that you guys had put out back in, back of this. I don't know when exactly when it was put out, but y'all made a decision to award this to Madison Medics. They have done the work of getting ready and will be ready to go live July 1st. But myself and our county attorney, the only office, have worked on this together. Have worked with Craig at the Madison Medics. And everybody's agreement, this agreement is okay to endorse at this point. So I'd like to add a motion to that.
Gentlemen, we have the contract in front of us and we probably read it several times. I'm sure you've gone this far as this, this is the one we did, as you said, the RFP on. Do I have a motion to approve as it stands?
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Discussion with county attorney, just want to seek clarification from the county manager. I understand that the contract was modified slightly. Do we have the modified version in our packet? Or do we have the original version in our packet?
I'm not sure if they have the, Mandy, do they have the one that Don sent?
Tony, I've not gotten one from your office.
I think the one that is in the packet was an original draft that was sent out from Madison Medics. And then that was sent, yesterday, we did final modifications to what is in your packet. And there were modifications, and I have the final draft. And I think Mark probably does too, the one that I worked on. What I can tell you is that the changes in it were, the one in your draft ran from noon on July the first to noon the next day. So the term of the contract moved back. It needs to start actually, we'll have a 12-hour gap if we don't start it at midnight. So it will run the fiscal year. There was an addition to it that in negotiations between Craig and the notes that he and Forrest had left, Craig wanted us to adopt a franchise ordinance, okay? We do not have a franchise ordinance. If we adopt a franchise ordinance, then that would mean we could limit who would be providing ambulance services to Madison County. We can't adopt that franchise ordinance right now because if you adopt an ordinance, you have to automatically grant it to everybody who is presently providing services, which is HCA, and they're going to terminate. So we will do that, but we will not, we will consider the ordinance after July 1st. That is in the contract. The original RFP under, there was a modification to paragraph 1(c). The original RFP provided that the provider would provide three locations in the county. So the draft that is in your packet did not have that language in it. So we added that back to the contract. There were provisions in the RFP that provided that the county would approve the billing rates on an annual basis. Now, those billing rates can only, are set by Medicare and Medicaid guidelines. But you will be approving those on an annual basis. This year, you will approve them by June 15th. And all other years, you'll approve them by May 1st. So that's a modification of what was in your contract, in your packet. There was a modification to paragraph G2. The original draft provided for a paramedic to each truck. I think the RFP said there would be a paramedic and an EMT. So we, so in other words, you're going to have a paramedic on every truck. You'll have an EMT also. There was negotiation that if there was a time due to staff shortage that the provider could not have a paramedic on the ambulance, that he could just go with EMTs, provided that there was written approval of that from the county. So that was a provision that Craig had used in the other two counties that he had. I'm fine with that provision. I think Forrest, I don't know what Forrest's position was, but that was something that was in Forrest's notes.
Don, shouldn't it, I'm a little confused there. It should be two paramedics per truck and not an EMT and a paramedic per truck.
The, now, the, looking at the original RFP, the original RFP said a paramedic and an EMT.
Yeah, but when he gave us a bid, it was to house two paramedics. Because there's certain skills that we're unable to do through the state without having two paramedics. So the word in there shouldn't be in his.
So, so look in your, look in the draft that was in your packet. If you will, look under, on the third page, scope of EMS, G2.
Okay, I'm getting there.
At about two-thirds of the way down, the original contract said the provider must provide an NC credential paramedic for each of the ambulances in service. Okay, I went back to the RFP. And the RFP provided that there would be an EMT and a paramedic for each truck. Now, if there was a requirement for two paramedics, I, I'm not privy to that. Because the language that, what I used was the original RFP plus the notes that were negotiated between Forrest and Craig, which I think that's what I provided to you at your March meeting at Marsh Hill moving forward with the negotiations. So what I tried to do when I reviewed this, I tried to review it consistent with the RFP and the notes that had been provided to me. So that's news to me, Mark. So if it is something that we may need to...
I think you probably need to call Craig on that, because that was my understanding. Because we're a full paramedic service name.
Right.
And we were, we were to keep it just as is now for two paramedics per truck.
Right, and that was something I asked him was about the personnel. So what you're saying is he would cut personnel at this, with this one paramedic duty?
And they would be lesser trained and could not do some of the emergency medical things in the back of that wagon that might save your life. And there are significant differences.
And what I'm talking about is RSI, so putting somebody on ventilator. We can't do it without having two paramedics, that's a state regulation.
Question, in, in clarification, an EMT that has a P after, is that a paramedic?
That's the paramedic, yeah. EMT is just a basic EMT.
Yeah, but if it has a P, it means there are paramedics.
Yeah.
I think I saw something.
No, it just provided for a, for an EMTP. I mean, his, his original draft said one paramedic. And that was, the original draft that he had given us said one paramedic. It didn't even have an EMT on it. So I went back to the RFP and I said a paramedic and an EMT. Now, what I'm hearing from you right now is that his bid said that he would provide two paramedics.
Correct, that's spot on.
So let me, the draft that I modified, what it needs to say is...
It shouldn't say two paramedics per truck.
Here's how I've drafted it. The service shall also provide for a minimum of one ALS-equipped quick-response vehicle. That was not in the draft in yours. I added that. I added the service must provide two NC-credentialed paramedics for each ambulance is in service. Provided however, service provider may staff each ambulance with one paramedic and one EMT in the event of a staff shortage, on the condition that the service provider has written approval from the county. And with the further understanding that the approval would only be in the event of a staff shortage and on a temporary basis.
I can live with that.
That is what I modified the language to from what is in your draft.
Okay, so in order not to have two paramedics, he would have to get prior approval?
Yes.
He won't get it from me.
Okay. In writing, prior approval in writing from this board, am I correct?
Yes, well, from the county, so that's you unless you delegate that to someone to give to. And then I added language to paragraph 1, G6 and 7, which what that is, that's a form of quality control, which we can require him to provide financial statements from his organization through an audit with a CPA, provide us with quarterly reports containing revenues and expenditures, backup information. And under 7, that we can require him to provide breakdowns of calls, emergency, non-emergency. The draft, if you're looking, what is in your draft, it sort of says he can give us a little bit of information. I modified it to exclude the exact language that was in the RFP.
To include, not exclude?
To include, yes. Now, I feel, I feel that what we got in the draft that was modified, that Mark reviewed and I sent over to him, basically contains everything that was in our original RFP. And we addressed the concerns that it had been left with he and your former county manager. Those would have been addressed. Mark forwarded this up to Craig. And Craig's fine with all the changes that we made to it. So I, I feel good with this agreement. I mean, I, I think it meets the quality measurements that were put out in your RFP. And this agreement that was modified is much more favorable to the county than the draft that is in your packet.
Thank you for catching that, thank you. It matters.
Mr. Attorney, was there not something in question over the rates? Did that not come up later?
Yes, there was a question over the billing rates that he had used in making his bid. He had used a mileage rating that was not what it was for Madison County. When we modified the language in there to set the scales and made it consistent with Medicaid and Medicare guidelines, that brought that back in the line in this contract. So I'm, I'm good with that.
Good.
And I think that, you know, I think you had an excellent RFP that was put out to begin with. I think that between the Madison Medics and the notes that Mr. Gilliam left us, left us with issues that needed to be resolved. And I believe that those issues got resolved favorable to the county.
Okay.
I would concur.
So we've heard a good, good robust discussion here on this. I think we feel comfortable. I'm hearing a great deal of confidence from Mr. Laws, our county attorney. I feel better hearing the two paramedics and the ALS vehicle. Are we now ready to appoint that we could approve the contract as it has been modified by the county attorney?
May no further discussion, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the modified contract as recommended by our attorney and county manager.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor, right hand and aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposing.
Against? Okay, okay.
He opposed it, I can't vote. I have to.
Okay, so it's three.
Okay, I'll move the next item on the agenda. And this is for a, to appoint a medical director for the EMS program. By taking all, we have to have a medical director. We have an excellent medical director that I'm putting forward to you. And that is Stacy Harin. He's done a great job in the, since 1990. He's been our medical director out here. He has a wealth of credentials and knowledge and experience. And has provided some firm medical care leadership. So you have there before you a contract that Donny has prepared. I've reviewed this contract. The simple terms are that he'll work no more than, excuse me, 10 hours a month, or 15, excuse me, $150 a hour. And so this is for you. And so you're both to agree.
And I would say that I have spoken to every paramedic that would talk to me. And everybody has, has given a thumbs up.
I mean, no better, Dr. Harin.
I mean, this is, this guy is, and he's also a missions person. If we're taking the people to mission, he is that person. So let's just hit that on the head.
Mr. Chair, I do need to suggest one, or not suggest or request one alteration. The body of the contract, everything is fine. But the title of the contract needs to reflect that it is for Madison County?
Yeah, I got two contracts for the price of one on that.
Okay.
Mr. Harin does is providing the same service for these counties.
And several counties.
And I believe everywhere else in the body of the contract, it had been corrected.
It has, yeah, it has.
But that's just that, just the title there.
Yeah.
We've got some good catch, thank you.
Mr. County Manager, this is an expense that we have been occurring ongoing, correct? Or is this going to be a new, a new budget item?
This will be a new budget item. Dr. Harin has been being paid, I believe, in the past by either HCA or prior to that by Mission Oxford. So the answer to the question, this will be an additional expense. The overall, you know, we're looking at 1.6 million, 1.69 million for the, about a total of $1,713,000, if you will, for this upcoming year, which is, you know, substantially more than what we've been paying in the past.
I have a million.
It is. It is an increased expense that we'll have to cover.
And it is required by state law, federal law?
Yes.
Both?
It is.
Okay. You have before you that, that contract that, do we need to vote up or down? Do I have a motion to approve?
Totally.
Motion from Mr. Briggman? Second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Gentry, discussion. All in favor, right hand and aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Mr. County Manager, before you move on to your next item, I just wanted to seek clarification on 10A. When you do the presentation of the budget, that is, that meeting is open to the general public as well. Is that correct?
Mr. Commissioner, the board, absolutely. Anytime we're presenting anything that has to do with the budget, we will make sure that it happens to be done in the public. If we were having a staff meeting to discuss budgets, no. But when I'm presenting information to the public, the answer, or anybody else, it needs to be in the public.
And that holds true for the budget workshops as well, correct?
Yes.
That's good.
I, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that.
It's a good question. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, and that's what we've been doing for years, man.
I know it is, and that's, yeah, and if you ever need to catch up on your sleep, that's, those are great meetings to come to, as a member of the general public.
Well, this year, it may be a little more challenging than it was.
Understood, yes, sir.
Yeah, but the point of clarification was understood too. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Got it.
Next item I have is a county board appointment. We have a vacancy that's coming up for AB Tech, and we have Frances Ramsey that we have proposed to be appointed to AB Tech to serve, continue serving on their board trustee.
Why?
She is excellent. She has really been beneficial as a trustee on the board. She's helped her Madison County campus out a lot. She really, really is involved in a lot of aspects of AB Tech, all across the board, Bonham Campus, Madison Campus, and she's, she's took a real, real special interest in AB Tech and helping it and the community and Madison County.
And during her next term, let's see if we can get her to be chair at some point. She would make a great chair for the whole school.
That would be.
She would. She'd make a great chair.
She is very well-rounded and great with what she does on the board. The board is, she's, in hiring of the new president, she was instrumental in doing a lot of work and took a lot of time in, in getting our new president.
Yes, positive.
And she never misses an opportunity to advocate for Madison County?
Never.
Absolutely.
Never.
That's awesome.
She and I have really did our best, being on the board, to do what we can to help Madison County AB Tech campus.
Yes. Mr. Briggman, will you make that motion to approve here?
I sure will. Thank you.
Seven of us make that motion. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye on the right hand?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm just happy she's willing to continue to serve.
She is an awesome person.
I'm telling you, that's great.
You have in your package a surplus property request. We have a, an offer from an individual for $2,000 to buy property ID number 9861, days 14, days 1310, located at Airport Road, Morris Hill. The tax value of the property is $4,500 and contains about an acre. The amount of bid that we've received is two thousand, or offer is $2,000, and so the request would be invoked either accept or issue a counteroffer from the board.
Well, we have another beautiful piece of property with a pumped airport view. Just as an FYI, guys, if you want to look down on the property summary sheet, I was looking at that earlier, look down about the middle of that, March 1st, 2007, and the number just below that. We've all had those discussions, haven't we?
Yes, those were the good old days.
Good old something. Yeah.
So we have a piece of property with a tax value of, what, $4,500? We have a bid of, eh, $2,000. What, what say you fellow commissioners?
Well, I, I've got a question for the attorney, sir. I noticed on our foreclosure filing, there are actually two PIN numbers on that, but they're just buying the one property, correct?
Well, yeah, the commissioners' deed are for two lots, lot 10 and lot 22, and their offer was on, what does it say the offer is on?
It's on the third.
I'm saying it's a deed, but it's paid.
Yeah, I guess they're, they must think they're buying both lots.
This doesn't, doesn't do that, does it?
Their offer is only for, only for one?
That's kind of.
Whereas the, the offer is for...
Okay.
Oh!
It's only for one lot?
Oh, okay.
Which lot? Which lot is it?
Yeah, which one is it? Do you know what number?
It's the one that.
Come a little closer. I can't hear.
The number that I wrote on there.
It's, so the PIN number that you wrote on the application?
The number that I wrote on there was on the G I S today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
We're good. Thank you. You normally don't take public comments, but that was good clarification.
Does that match the property card?
Okay. Well, that's, that's the only other thing. I'd like for you to double-check that, because I had some question about that.
The what map?
If it matches the property card, does the paperwork all matches up?
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to make sure that the legally word correct.
Lots of words.
It is. The property card, if you look up at the very top, right in the middle, the PIN number, 9861141310, that matches what is in her offer. We just need clarification then that you can approve it as long as that PIN number is for one lot.
One lot.
One lot.
One lot.
Okay.
Whichever one, whether it's 10 or 22, because the deed has two lots in it. So as long as you're fine, as long as you're selling one lot.
For that part.
Can you refresh my memory? Is this what, what's your winner? Is this a done deal?
Now, this is the initial offer, which will then start the.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I can clarify too. When I list our properties, they're all listed individually on our website, so it's just for one property. Lori had told me that when they go through the foreclosure process, sometimes lots are grouped together, but they're still listed individually, so unless I note otherwise, and there's only one PIN number, then it's only for one lot.
So we're all on the same page, including the young lady who's making the bid. Everybody realizes it's a one lot?
Yes.
All right, and to clarify, because it's been a while since we've had one of these, this just, this will literally start the upset bid process at this point if we accept her offer.
Correct.
So.
I've got a question. An acre of land up there is just worth $4,500.
It is today.
Yeah.
That's what Wayne was saying.
I double-checked that with the tax office because I was a little shocked too, and she said due to the revales that yes.
That's why I was pointing back to a slight deflation in the bank.
Taking, taking all things into consideration, I, I move that we proceed, accept the offer and proceed. I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Now, this does, this goes into the upset bid process, and it may be rejected even after.
Correct.
It goes through the process.
Correct.
That is possible.
Correct.
That's, that's accurate. Further discussion. Okay, then all in favor? Aye on the right hand?
Aye.
Okay, that's, okay, very good. Thank you.
Last item that I have, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is a public records request policy and procedure, and so this has been something that we've been working on to get into your hands and get wrapped, and so this policy procedure describes how to request copies of public records, and how to go through that. It also has and describes what to expect after submitting the request, how to inspect records if you just want to come in and look at it, and it does contemplate that in some cases, depending on the nature of the request, if somebody made a request for some protective information, whether it be HIPAA or personnel-related or some other item that has some protection in the law that we cannot disclose through the public records request, this gives an opportunity for picking the pile of feet. It also covers, if you will, duplication, mailing, and special service fees, and we did some calculations to determine how much our cost per copy were. It's right at four cents for one side, seven cents for double-sided, and if, if the public records request requires an extensive amount of time to compile and get the information together, of course, we contact the person that's asking for it, but we would tell them that we are planning to charge you $27 an hour and give them the option of an estimated time that it's going to take to get the information together, and give them the option of whether they want to incur that cost. If they do, then they will make a deposit of $25 to us to give, and/or even more if it's an large expense.
Is this black and white copies more, or is it colored?
They're black and white. I mean, if we're going to do color, we won't have to increase.
That's, that's what I was wanting.
We can schedule for them too, but this is a duplication. In the event that somebody doesn't pay their fees, in a, within thirty days, we'll request it, and we will not allow further requests until they pay it. So there's a form that people will use that will be online on our county's website that they can complete. So this is the policy, if you will. I've looked it over very closely. Mandy looks it over very closely. Our attorneys have looked it over very closely, and so my recommendation is that we adopt this policy and I'll start using it.
Mr. Laws, are you, are you in favor of this policy? Does, does it meet our requirements for the Freedom of Information Act?
I am, I am in favor of the policy and, and I think I said several months ago we needed to do it. I did not assist in doing this policy, so that's the first time I've seen it tonight. So I read over it. I, I've not had time to study it because I've, I've not seen it. I, I know Mandy's been working on it. Did someone help you with it, Mandy?
Mark had asked me to contact Robertson Stevens, and said John Dorf with Robertson Stevens actually wrote this policy, and he and Mark revised it earlier in the week.
So I would defer to his expertise.
That's fine.
And I'm not sick of, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that they know what they're doing.
I just said, no, we can, I didn't know we could charge for these kind of things.
Oh, you can charge. There's certain provisions. Yeah, you can remove reasonable charges of doing those things. I do know that one.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, that's what we're seeking to do, not to, not to create a barrier for someone to get public information. It is to cover reasonable expenses associated with requests.
It is that, it is also to clarify if somebody makes a request, you know, we want to make sure, you know, if it's a, well, I want something, we need to be, the request er needs to identify a specific document in the record. If the record, if their request is vague, then that document may not exist, and therefore we can't produce. So if somebody wants something, they're going to have to be specific to identify what it is that they're looking for.
Right, and, and I totally, I'm totally on board with that. I think my question, it just specifically refers to the, the costs involved in providing public records to the public.
You're right, Commissioner Winkle, the idea here is that if it's going to be an easier request, you know, than the county may not, I mean, that we can do, you know, in a couple of minutes, we're probably not going to charge somebody any labor for that. If it's an extensive request that takes a half a day.
Sure.
Of somebody's time, then we're going to ask whoever is making that request to back.
And, and I understand, and the, and the copy charges are only incurred if you ask for, if, if they request copies. They can request an electronic version that would not cost them for the actual per-page charge.
And the electronic version, if it exists in electronic format.
Okay.
And if it's something that's in a paper format, there's no requirement that we have to convert that to an electronic format. It'll be in the format that it exists.
So if there's, if it's, if it's a minor request that doesn't take a tremendous amount of time, one would not charge the public, we would not charge the public for that service?
Except for the cost of the copy.
Except for the cost of the copies. Okay. And the only thing, what we're getting into charging for is requests that are extensive enough that require additional labor and staff time to pull somebody off of their regular job, their, their regular duties to specifically address a, a public request, a public records request issue?
You've got it, bud.
Okay.
Also, it says, "Request for public records will be addressed and fulfilled according to the order in which they are received." Will we notify a person if there is a substantial amount of requests pending in front of them?
The, we will notify them that we've received their request and that, that we are working on it. We will not disclose, you know, for example, that we've got ten requests in front of this or that one. We will deal with the individual based on what it is that they're asking for. So we will also be doing one more thing that when, let's say, an individual makes a public records request, we are going to log that on our webpage. The name of the person, here's what they requested, here is the information that we've provided, and that'll be there from now on forever and ever. And the thought process behind it is that if somebody else comes along and wants that same information, it's right here. It's already on our website, so that.
So at that point, it was made public to that individual, but now it's going to be public and available for everyone going forward. They don't have to re-request something that's already been requested once?
That's correct, because at that point, it's, it's a public record in and of itself.
All right. Now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the thought behind what we're trying to accomplish is, we want to be transparent. If there's something that somebody wants to say, we want to make sure that everybody's considered if they need to.
And will this policy be instituted retroactively, or requests that are already on the books would not be subjected to this policy if they, if they've already made the request prior to us passing this policy?
This, this, well, we've already got information that we wanted to know. We will apply certain aspects of that to this, okay? What I mean by that is, if you've got a records request that's going to be extensive, we will charge you, we will notify you that it's going to take this amount of time, and so on and so forth. So the answer to the question is, any records request, we have an inventory right now. When you approve this, we'll continue to apply, we'll apply this, okay?
I don't, I, I don't like that, and I'll tell you why. My personal opinion is that if we adopt this tonight, I think it should be from tonight forward, the fees and the charge. You're, you're going to charge the people that have requested if we approve this tonight? Is that what you're saying?
The answer is yes. Our, our, our plan is that, you know, and here's the reason that I make that statement and make that comment, you know, we have limited staff. that comment, you know, we have limited staff in the county, you know, we have audits, we have budgets, we have COVID-19, we have a lot of things that our staff is trying to accomplish. And we want to accommodate public records requests and whatnot and what have you. But we're talking about taking away from some of the key people that we have to fulfill a public records request that might take them two or three days to compile. That takes them out of their normal job, doing the things that you need them to do that are legal requirements. Yes, this is a legal requirement, you know, but, you know, we're taking dollars, if you will, from some taxpayers and providing these expenses to somebody else to become a, you know, just go get the information and everybody else is going to pay. I think the individual who asks for it should pay. That's my recommendation.
How many record requests are pending right now?
I don't have an inventory at this point. Do you have one, Mandy?
We have less than a handful. There aren't very many that I'm aware of unless they've been sent to other department heads, which this will kind of help alleviate that as well. It just kind of makes a process. And the process that we've been going by is in accordance with the general statute. And the general statute notes that all these things can happen. So we could have technically been doing this all along, you know, according to statute. So what we're doing really doesn't change anything that the law says we can do. Does that make sense?
All right, well, we have it on the floor. We need to approve the policy or not approve the policy. Do I have a motion?
I like the motion to approve it.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a second discussion.
Well, I personally don't think it's right to go back and charge someone that's already requested before tonight and has approved this, and that's why I will vote no on this.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm not in objection to the procedure, the policy and procedures the way it states. I have no problem with that.
Gotcha.
So you're saying whatever's out there now won't be grandfathered in, Mark?
No, I mean, there are public records requests. The state law authorized us to charge those fees in the past. So, you know, what we're bringing to you though is clarification. And so I don't see if there's a problem with charging for those records requests that have not been filled in. And so that's, I'll leave it at that.
Can I interject that we have charged for records before?
Okay.
Since I have been here.
That's what I was going to say, I think we have charged before.
Went where it was allowable out of my law. So it's not that we've never charged for records.
We're just defying the policy at this point.
Yeah.
I understand.
That we have charged before.
And I understand the perception though might look so, I'm trying to, I'm weighing this. I hear what Mr. Brigham is saying too, but also I hear what you're saying and I see from there. Okay, all right. Well, either way, we have it on the floors, a motion, a second. Do I have any more discussion? All in favor, raise right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those again saying, okay, here we go.
I'm sorry, are you a person, one of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, fellow commissioners, at this point in time, I'm going to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North County General Statute 143-318 dot 11A3 for attorney-client discussion on Madison Asphalt versus Madison County, file number 19CVS-340. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we are now in closed session. Janice. Jan B., shut up.